Okay, today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, 2021. I call the village board meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Feiter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board members are present tonight. And next we move on to pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight we have the invocation from Pastor Tab of the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. One of them please rise. Pastor, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, village trustees, all village officials, officers, members, and friends. Let us pray. Dear loving Creator God, we come to you this evening thanking you for the opportunity to meet one more time to take care of the business of this village, of this exceptional community called Elk Grove Village. Lord, we thank you for all of the blessings and accomplishments that you have bestowed upon us this year, and we pray for your hand of blessing as we embark upon a new year. Lord, we also ask your blessings for a happy and safe holiday season. Bring us back, oh God, refreshed and ready to serve you and this village to the best of our ability in the various roles that you have called us to in this exceptional community called Elk Grove Village. But Father in heaven, right now we commit this meeting to you. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of our lives and ministries. As we discuss the affairs of this village, we ask for your will to be done. Show us your purposes. Enlighten us that we may know how you want us to accomplish our tasks. We desire your glory and blessing in all we do. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path and help us to stay on track. Let your will be done as we plan and make decisions for the new year. Lord, we thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve others. May our actions and attitudes please you on this day and in the days to come. We pray all these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second. I want to thank you again for coming and helping us and all you do for the community. Church all going good? Ah, good. Some nice dark chocolates?
Thank you.
My heart doctor said I can eat those because they're made of dark chocolate instead of milk chocolate.
Right, right.
We're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good holiday.
You too.
Okay, move on to approve the minutes of November twenty... no, I'm sorry, November sixteenth, 2021.
Sorry. Sorry. It was rehearsing. I may move where you approve the minutes of the November sixteenth, 2021 meeting and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion by trustee Listner, second by trustee Feiter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let direction show and ask approval. Yes, we do have a rookie trustee up here tonight, and she got through her first vote with no problem at all. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, move on now to mayor and board of trustees report. Couple of quick items. We had our tree lighting back on November twenty-sixth and went very well. Weather held up real good for us, not too much wind. Johnny Rockets gave us a phenomenal show. We want to thank everyone that turned out. We had, you know, what do we have, Paul Revere's Raiders turned out, you had a good show. You know, thousands of people, we thank you for turning out, and it's a great way to start the holiday season, and we're excited about that. And speaking of holiday season, in case we do forget, it is coming up soon. For all the little ones out there, Santa will be coming pretty soon. So on behalf of the board, all staff in the village, we wish everyone a very merry Christmas, a very happy holiday, and a very great new year coming up in 2022. Also like to talk about, I had a chance to go to the Character Community Coalition celebration back on Tuesday, December seventh, where we presented all the toys, some more out there now for Toys for Tots. And I know trustee Miller was there, I think that was it. Yeah, trustee Miller and I were there, and we had a chance to get them all, and they were very appreciative, especially this time of year. And they say the needs keep growing every year. So we appreciate Elk Grove turning out. I know our police did, I think, stuff the squad last Saturday at the Walmart and did a great job. So we're excited to be part of that, and it turned out well for everyone involved. Next, everyone that's been around the town center noticed that Dollar Tree opened up, and it was very... anytime I went by, there was quite a line in there. Remember, it's going to soon be known as Dollar Point Two-Five Tree. It's going to be Dollar and a Quarter. I saw it on the news, they have a sign and everything ready for it, so inflation's catching up even with Dollar Tree. So, but we're excited that they're here, excited that they're doing well. Also, in the near future, you're going to notice the village is putting up more cameras inside this village. They are not speed cameras, we're not putting up more red light cameras. What we're putting up is a pretty extensive system. They're actually, most of them are called LPR cameras. LPR stands for license plate readers. And what it is, is it's cameras that are set up in a way throughout the mostly high areas, like in the industrial park by the expressways. And these cameras are set up to read license plates. Everyone knows recently that we've had a pretty big rash of people stealing catalytic converters and other things here in the community, they are throughout the area. Well, by having this license plate reader system... I thought that was you, George.
Yeah, me.
You got your paycheck this week. Not big enough? No. Anyways, license plate readers will allow these cameras that when a car goes by them, we input in the system, or maybe another town, Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, inputs in the system, they're looking for a car with license plate one, two, three. Well, once that license plate is picked up by any one of our readers, it instantly notifies our police and all the police part of the system, or of the part of the system, that here's that car you're looking for, it's located at Bussy and Oakton. Then it goes by another one, picks up, now it's at Bussy and Devon. And it is a huge, huge assistance for the police department in solving issues that we have going on. So we're excited about the system, we're looking forward to getting that installed. And then we're also putting in a few more, what we call three hundred and sixty degree cameras throughout the village. These assist in a lot of ways. Now, the nice thing about these cameras and stuff is these cameras can be utilized by people. In other words, if you're in a car accident and you got a debate, who's fault did it, who turned, who didn't stop, these cameras can be foiled, and you can look at them and see what actually happened. So they benefit in a lot of ways, helps us security wise, helps us safety wise, and can help people in situations that arise. So that's going to be coming soon, it's going to be done over three phases, and it's going to be assistance for everyone, but the biggest assistance is that license plate surveillance ones. Those will be phenomenal to help us out. So we're excited about that. Next thing, real quick, anyone that knows Dr. Riggs's building? Dr. Riggs was a long time dental orthodontist actually here in the village. He had an office building at, right behind the Topolpa Strip Shopping Center on Arlington Road. Well, the village got the property. It was signed over to us, didn't cost us anything. The building's in very disrepair, had a lot of issues with it, so the village got it. We will be tearing that building down in the near future, then be a greenfield site and waiting for some potential future development come. But I know a lot of people looked at it, it's been an eyesore. The village has actually been taking care of it for quite some time, and we took it over and it'll be taken care of. So I know a lot of people live there, work there, or drive by there, ask us questions. So let you know, we've got it, we're going to take care of it and get it all resolved. One thing I want to bring up, something unique. If anyone filed a paper recently, remember, as you know, I've talked in the past about, you know, we take care of issues, I know COVID's important and all that, but the number one prob... health problem in this world that can be a hundred percent resolved is smoking. I've been in my soapbox before, trying to get the village to ban the sale and all that, you know, it hasn't been successful, but New Zealand, the country, New Zealand just rolled out, got the article here, rose out, rolled out a plan that will literally take about fifty years to fully implement. But what they're doing is this, starting in year 2022, in New Zealand, I guess, you only have to be fifteen to buy and smoke cigarettes. So starting in 2022, anyone fifteen years and younger cannot buy cigarettes. Twenty twenty-three, they increase it one more year. Now it's sixteen, because a fifty-year-old moved to sixteen. Then after that, seventeen, eighteen, and every year it just keeps progressing. And the hope is, in about forty, fifty years, cigarettes go gone. No one smokes, no one has a problem. It's a long-term solution, but I gotta give New Zealand... see, boy, you think I come out of the box sometimes?
Oh, we do.
I wish I would have thought of that one. It's a great idea, but, you know, but again, cigarettes are the only products sold in the world, only products sold in the world legally that if you use it is guaranteed to harm you. Guaranteed. One puff is guaranteed to harm you. So maybe someday we'll find other ways to address those issues. Next thing, real quick, if you read the paper, there's this article about a town that's to the north of us, a neighbor's to the north of us, they did liquor checks. And every year, I know I always get them, some board members probably do too, remember in Elk Grove, if you buy packaged liquor, by law, you have to be ID checked, no matter what age. Even when old timers go in, they all get checked. So it, everyone gets it. And we passed that law in January first of two thousand, and it's been very successful. Actually, this article showed how successful we've been. Our neighbors to the north did a liquor check, which towns do, that is, when they get young people, seventeen, eighteen years old, well below the age, and in Elk Grove, we use only men, young boys, because women sometimes can look older if they're made up and all. Guys, you know, so we get young guys, a lot of them don't even shave yet. And you go unknown, and you try to buy liquor without a license or of age, and it's called stings, we do that all the time. Well, the town north of us did it in two thousand and nineteen, and they had fourteen failures. They didn't check it all in two thousand and twenty, they just went out and did it again in two thousand and twenty-one. This time, that town had eighteen failures. That means eighteen times a seventeen-year-old was held by liquor at these places without being checked. That's almost twenty percent of their liquor establishments. Now, what I try to tell people all the time, give you an example, the last time we had a failure for a liquor license was we had one place, the golf course, in two thousand and nineteen. The last time before that was two places in two thousand and thirteen, Lou Malinotti's and Sweet Baby Ray's. In the last eleven years, we've had a grand total of three places that sold where they shouldn't have. A town to the north of us had eighteen just in one year. They had thirty-two just in two years. So if you want to know if this works, it works. And again, we're not denying people they have the right to buy liquor, buy it, we're trying to keep it out of the hands of young people. And in Elk Grove, it's working. So my hope is, I talked to my fellow mayor and stuff, I can give him some advice, and he can maybe take up our idea and make his town a little safer that way, too. Next item, before I have only one item after this, update, Elk Grove Cares. If anyone saw the news yesterday, as of yesterday, we sent another record for addiction overdose deaths in this country. As of yesterday, over a hundred thousand people died of addiction overdose. If you may or may not remember, in two thousand and twenty, ninety-three thousand died, which was a record. So one of the unfortunate things with COVID and everything going on is addiction has been rising. What we've seen in Elk Grove with our cares program is, especially among alcoholics. So please, Elk Grove Cares is here to help you. We ask no questions, you get, come to us, we will take care of you. We'll stay with you, we'll get you in a treatment facility, we'll get you through the treatment facility when you come out. If you don't have a job, we'll help you get a job. We have businesses here in Elk Grove. Business, one for example, Tasty Catering. We have businesses here in Elk Grove, sight unseen will hire you if you go through the Elk Grove's cares program. They'll hire you like that. Tom, the owner, is a former addict himself. I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm able to say, he told me, please tell people that. He knows what it is. He will hire you sight unseen if you go through our program. So we'll get you a place to live, we'll get you a job, we'll get you on the path to recovery. Remember, addiction is a disease. Addiction is a disease. No one wakes up in the morning and say, hey, I'm going to become a heroin addict today. What a great day, let's go. Doesn't happen. Like, I didn't wake up one day and say, hey, I want to have bypass surgery because I got a heart disease. I didn't wake up one and do that. I got a disease of heart, a heart disease. People have a disease of cancer, the disease of addiction. We gotta get past the segmentation. No one wants to be an addict. We need to help those people. Those catalytic converters I'm talking about being stolen, I guarantee by the vast majority are being stolen by people that are addicted to some kind of drug and looking for money for a quick fix. Most of break-ins in cars, we hear about it all the time, we know that's ninety-five percent of those people are addicts, looking for quick cash, for a quick fix. It helps all of us. You may not agree with it, but it saves and protects your property. So if you know anyone, we don't care if they live in Barrington, Elk Grove, Arlington Heights, Chicago, if you got anyone that needs help, call us, we will help them. We'll pick them up, we'll stay with them, if they don't have insurance, we'll pay for their place to stay. This program's gone well. Matter of fact, we just got a report back from a person working on the doctorates that did a study of our program. And one quick thing, she's actually going to come to a board meeting and talk about it, one of the quick things she found, that our deaths in Elk Grove Village from addiction has dropped by over half since we started our program. That I'm proud of, damn proud of that. So again, Elk Grove Cares is still there, we gotta keep spreading the word, keep the word out there, and we can help fight this disease of addiction over these holidays. Okay, last but not least, an announcement tonight, kind of an important announcement, especially us long-timers that have been in Elk Grove a long time. I grew up over behind the original shopping center, used to be the IGA when I was a kid, the bowling alley shopping center right there at Arlington, or Arlington Road in Higgins. That's the first shopping center here in Elk Grove. I grew up there, my whole life, you know, as a kid, was by there. I went to the Ben Franklin that was there, and Batner, Gail Batner had the drugstore and had the IGA, all that. Well, those two places, the bowling alley and the shopping center have been for sale for quite some time. And last summer, we started getting inquiries at our engineering department about what would be allowed to be put in place of the bowling alley. In other words, it's up for sale, and some business were looking to buy the bowling alley, tear it down. Two of the people came in and asked if we would allow them to put a used car sales lot where the bowling alley is. Another person came and wanted to turn the bowling alley into a giant used storied place. Can you imagine going down Arlington's Road with a big curved roof, big words on it, "used stored here"? I mean, we talked as a board, that's truly not what we envisioned being at the preeminent entryway to this community. That has always been our number one entryway in Elk Grove, whether you come from two ninety or from ninety, into our business park, into our residential area, using the waltz, whatever. And we did not envision that being the future of that area. And both areas were for sale, like I say, for the bowling alley, I talked to Debbie Handler there, whose Handler family owned it from the beginning, that was for sale for at least three years. And Niemann's owned the shopping center, original owners, that's been for sale at least a year and a half, two years. So the board talked, and we decided that, you know, with what we see maybe coming there, that is not what we wanted. So we decided that the village was going to step up and investigate possibly buying those two places, the bowling alley and the shopping center. And tonight, on the village agenda, we have come to an agreement with both the Handler family that owns the bowling alley and the Niemann family that owns the shopping center, we've come to an agreement that the village will be buying those two places. And that also includes the Rose Garden Cafe and BMO Harris Bank Building. The only thing not included in the corner is the gas station, the Shell Gas Station. So we'll be buying it, we'll be closing by the end of the year, by December thirtieth. This is truly a rare opportunity for the village to have its say in what's going to happen there. You know, not just the elected official, but staff, residents, you know, they'll give us ideas, all that. It gives us really a unique idea of what we can do there from it. We want input from people and all that. The price tag for the Niemann Strip Shopping Center is ten million, seven hundred thousand. The price tag for the bowling alley is two million dollars. The uniqueness about those two buildings, this goes back to nineteen sixty-three, is they have, the bowling alley has a lifetime perpetual forever agreement to use the parking lot of the shopping center. And that may not seem like a big deal, but it is, because depending, if Niemann would have sold it to someone else, they would have been handcuffed because they had to make sure there's so many parking spaces still preserved to support the bowling alley. And so it really made a kind of a convoluted issue for them trying to sell and develop, and anyone coming in to develop it. So we feel, the board feels comfortable that we think one use for the area makes sense. We understand there are some iconic businesses in that shopping center. Jiraj Bakery. My kids, my son, worked there for years. That's, you know, I grew up with Ken Jiraj. I mean, my whole life, we'd go in there and sit there, that same picture, the guy praying up there on the wall, it's been there forever. We know that's iconic for Elk Grove. We're not looking for Jiraj to go anywhere. You got Tensky, right? Tensuki, Tensuki, that business is doing phenomenal, serves a big need and all that. We feel that is iconic, needs to stay. The Fight Shop, Seven Mile Cycle, the Rose Garden, we don't have restaurants like that in Elk Grove, they don't exist. We understand that, we're looking to preserve those businesses, we really are. What's going to happen is this, early next year, the village is going to put out a, what we call an RFP. Request for proposal. And what that means is, we'll put out to developers that, hey, here's what we have. What we'd like to see in there, as a board, and I think the community, is we'd like to see some kind of a mixed-use development there. What we mean by mixed use is some housing, but also protect the retail business there, too, the Jirajas, Seven Mile, Rose Garden. Last Tuesday, I went out and met with those owners. I know them all, I've known them all for years. Met with them, discussed it and all that, they want to be part of the development, they were not blindsided by what we're doing. So we're going to put out requests for proposals. What we kind of envision happening is condos are not a big thing nowadays. What's the most popular thing to build for housing is apartments. These apartments will not be inexpensive. We figure the average apartment will go for between two thousand and twenty-two hundred dollars a month. But what we're finding, as we did investigating, the most popular people renting apartments is not what you think. It's not the young, we used to call them yuppies, twenty, thirty-year-olds, it's mostly seniors. What's happening is seniors don't want to have the burden of a house, the one to maintain. If something happens to them, they pass away, their kids now have to come in, clean it out, sell it, it's a pain. What a lot of seniors are doing nowadays is they're selling their houses, downsizing, getting an apartment. That way they have flexibility. If they have to move into assisted living, it's easy, the apartment lease comes up, they move into assisted living. If something, God forbid, happens to them, it's easy for the family, minimal things to clear out, the lease comes up, it's done, they don't have to sell a house, they have money from the house, sit in a CD, they go get the money. So they're seeing that. But the beauty of this location is being by Bussy Woods, very popular with renters. Again, these are high-end apartments with a lot of amenities there, workout rooms, meeting rooms, guest gathering places, all that. The nice thing about apartments are, we know the housing market changes, if it goes now, condos are popular again, apartments can be changed to condos very easily. Matter of fact, we had a set of condos right over there by Ridge Square that went from condos recently to apartments. And they can go back to apartments, getting condos someday if they want to. It happens a lot, apartments are in big demand. So we're looking for the developers to come with their ideas to this village. You know, popularly nowadays, you have apartments on the upper floors and the shopping on the bottom floor. Or they may do it, whatever they come up with, it's ideas we can look at as a village and see what we think fits the future needs for this village. As I've said many times for the past probably ten years, strip shopping centers are a thing of the past. They're slowly dying everywhere. That's why you see more and more vacancies. I talk to mayors all the time, all the time, especially some towns have a lot of strip shopping centers, and that's the biggest frustration of the mayors. You know, no one goes to Hallmark and strip shopping centers anymore, or what do they call it, body works, bath and body works, they don't, they're not there anymore, they're gone. Little hardware stores are gone now. Every town used to have a little Ace Hardware tucked in the shopping center or True Value, not anymore. No one goes to Home Depot, Lowe's, Menards, I mean, so what was once met is not there anymore. Most strip shopping centers you see nowadays, well, there's always acid and building material, but that's, that's unique because they're special. But what you see most strip shopping centers nowadays is a Starbucks, a Cleaners, and a Quick Mart, that's about it, that's most of them. So it's going to happen. This is our first one. It may not be our last one. So with that said, I want everybody to understand, that's what's happening, I know that shopping area is iconic, I've been here since nineteen sixty, so my whole life, I've been by that shopping center, been to it. So I know what, people have some attachments to it. We're not throwing Jiraj out of town, we're not throwing Rose Garden out of town. All of them want to still be part of the new development, they're excited about it. So that's going to be happening very soon. Again, we're going to put out the RFPs early next year, and let's see what comes back, and let's see what happens. It's a step, this village has never been shy about doing things. Just go down the street from that shopping to the new tech park. Look at that, that's gorgeous, beautiful. Matter of fact, we got a lot of that type of use now going at Northwest Point. So the idea we had is expanding, it's growing. And our hope is, what we do at the old parking shop, now it's called Elk Crossings? Elk Corners, whatever's now, I still remember parking shop, I'm sorry, I'm getting old, I don't, I forget, you know, things. It's still, you know, it's time has come, and we're glad we have this golden opportunity to do it. Now, people say, well, how are you paying for that, mayor? Well, if you remember, we had the old hotel site at the corner of Bussy and Oakton, that was the old Best Western Motor Lodge, that's now their new prime data, data center coming. They're buying that, giving us, Matt, twenty-two and a half million dollars, or twenty-one? Twenty-one and a half million dollars, well, that's more than twelve and a half million, so we got the money. Again, in the board, always, we look to reinvest back in the community to make it better. So we'll have that money available to help pay for all that. So that's happening, we wanted the community to know about it upfront, early on, and explain exactly what's going on. That's the whole thing. I talked to Debbie about it, Debbie actually told me she had a bowling alley lined up to buy it in two thousand and eighteen, but COVID hit, deal fell through. She had almost no, she had no bowling alleys approach her for the past two years. Like I say, used car lots, a used storied place, I don't think any of us want to see that, that location. That's why we're going to step forward. And Niemann family, Mr. Niemann, the father, passed away a while ago, it's time for them to move on, and so that's why they had their place up for sale. So again, good timing, want to get this done. Any questions people have, it's time, because they see all of us in town over the holidays and everything, ask us, we're more than happy to tell you what we know that's happening. But that's everything that's going on, we're trying to be as transparent as possible to tell you everything that's happening. So that's with that. With that said, we got a lot of people here for some summer awards, so we'll go on down here right now. Why don't we start with, please Chief Walsh, why don't we start with you, my friend? Nice stars.
Thank you, sir.
Wow, look right.
Officer Williams, can you come down to the podium, please? So Officer John Williams started with us in March of nineteen ninety-seven, he's been with the village for the past twenty-five years, and tonight is a pretty awesome occasion for us. Officer Williams is going to receive his fourth Officer Williams is going to receive his fourth lifesaving award since he started here. Like I said, the police department, we recognize officers for doing really great work. And Officer Williams, his first lifesaving award happened in 2013. He located a subject who was unconscious in cardiac arrest. He did chest compressions and used the AEDs, which are in every squad car, and saved the man's life. His second award came in 2019. The mayor mentioned about Elk Grove Cares. Part of that program is every police officer in town and several other locations have Narcan, which is a drug, an opioid-reducing drug that brings people back from near death. John, in 2019, came across a person that was in the midst of a drug overdose, gave that person Narcan, and that person survived, and I believe entered into the Elk Grove Cares program after that. Award number three came in 2020. John came upon another person that was unconscious, did chest compressions, and used the AED and saved that person's life. And then tonight, I'm proud to present him with this lifesaving award and ribbon. And on this occasion, he came across an unconscious driver and gave CPR and saved that person's life. So this is an award that John can wear on his uniform. One of the few peoples I know, Chief, do you remember anybody ever having four lifesaving awards? It's a pretty major accomplishment, so I'd like to have the mayor present John with the certificate and the ribbon. So congratulations, John.
Do you want to say a few words? You can tell them great FQI.
No, I just want to say it was really a rewarding process to be part of the preservation of human life. And I'd also like to say thank you to the chief for making sure that we get the training that we, that we need to do that. And to the fire chief for making sure that his medics provided that training. It's very, very beneficial.
Well, you know, one of the, like John said, one of the things he did was, he provided Narcan, we were just talking about the Elk Grove Cares program. And all of our officers have been trained how to use it. We actually have Narcan locations throughout this village. It's in different businesses, it's in different public buildings, all that. And the key on that is, the reason why it's so important, what John did was, when you zap someone, those people are basically near death. They're almost dead. You zap them out of it. When you zap them out of it, the first thing, they're really susceptible, looking for help. Because they realize they almost died. First, they do get mad because you got them out of their hide, but you did save a life, they realize it. But that's a perfect time to address them, to get help. Because now they realize, oh my God, I almost died and all that. And that's why it's great that John did that, because got that person to go into our cares program to try to go through recovery and get away from that. So, and it's important to do that. And so, John, I thank you for that. You know, it's saving a life maybe twice or three times, and that means a lot. But again, to have our, it's not just John, all of our officers, our firemen, our public workers, all of our guys, they're all trained to help people. And like I say, if they have four times, John, it's really impressive. We can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Mayor.
You mean the world.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. And now for JS, should we get Danny Burke to come down? Danny, you want to come on down?
So Deputy Chief Burke, he is now running the Elk Grove Cares program for us through the police department. He monitors the grants. And we put a lot of information out that to the community so they can understand the EGV cares program, how it works. But Danny was contacted recently by one of our businesses in the community, and I'd like him to share that story with you now, so Deputy Chief Burke.
All right, so the program is an awesome program like the mayor was talking about. And I was surprised, a couple of weeks ago, I got an email asking where can we donate our bake sale money for the Elk Grove Cares program? And we're fortunate enough that we got recently approved again for a $101,000 grant. And then outside of that, the village covers the expenses, which can be up to $12,000 a person to get treatment. And I believe as of today, we're at 89 people that have sought treatment through our program. We have some really good success stories. So I get an email because nobody knew what to do with bake sale money, and it was $620 that this company raised. So we have some folks from JS Freight that kind of have a story about how they found out about the program. So would you folks mind coming up?
JS, just so you know, JS Freight is located right there on Devon, in one of those brand-new buildings that we have built. So we're excited, want to have new people in Elk Grove, and more importantly, want to get back to the community. Come on down, welcome. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So who wants to, let us know.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go first. I mean, for us as a company, you know, we always try to establish us in a community, and you know, we have Kim, who is her trusted employee. And what she does for us is, on a monthly basis, we choose one philanthropy project that we try to give back a little bit to the community where we're taking so much from, right? We, we, we work hard every single day. So for us, it's that giving back or trying to give back to the community where we're in is very, very important in who we are as a company. And Kim can say a little bit more about how she's picking those great projects that we're trying to, to work on.
Kim?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that during COVID, our philanthropy projects that we do within our communities that we work at really was challenging because we weren't doing the traditional go-to-the-food bank and volunteer in person. So when we first moved into Elk Grove, I went on the website to say, you know, we're new here and it would be good to try to see what we can do. And of course, again, COVID, we can't really go somewhere and volunteer, so we decided to host a bake sale, which we've never done before. And what's really unique about raising $620 is there was about 30 people and maybe 25 warehouse staff, and that was it. So we managed to get a lot of people to participate in the baking and also the buying. So we were very pleased when I was looking on Elk Grove's website to try to figure out what we were going to do with the money. I came across the information about Elk Grove Cares, and I realized a long time ago how, how bad this scourge on our, our history is, this opioid addiction. And I became very passionate about the fact that Elk Grove was one of three cities in the entire nation to be able to be awarded the grant money to do something so beneficial for people that are suffering from a disease. And I agree very much with what you said earlier. So it was my pleasure then to raise this money and donate it to a very worthwhile program.
My pleasure. And Elk Grove, we'd like to hand out and thank you little logos that actually are village sealed. It's a dark chalk, it's my heart doctor said I could eat that. And so we'd like to give you a little token of thanking for it. We want to welcome you to Elk Grove though again too. I mean, it's great, your new location and nice, high visibility there for you and good, so. But thank you for giving back. You don't realize how important that cares program is, as I talked about. And, you know, it's great that levy a little bit makes a difference. And matter of fact, when we're talking about cares, you know, this June is our fourth anniversary, and in the very near future, I think we'll be announcing a little way to keep the word out there about it, a little community coming together. So keep your ears open, we may have a special event coming up too. So again, thank you for everything. We appreciate it. And have a great holiday. Yes, Merry Christmas. Thank you. Okay, we're going to kind of mix around a little bit, chief's request is fine. Lions Club members, come on up. Lions and Leos, Lions and Leos, come on up. As you know, it's been now almost two months, but the weather tomorrow is going to be warm like it is Halloween. We did a Halloween decorating contest this year again. And this year, the Lions and the Leos were all part of the judging of the contest. So I'm going to let them run it. We got, I think we have two here tonight. Yeah, so we got them here. Let me make sure the girls and the Widdens, am I right? Both? Is there anybody else for the Halloween? I don't think so. Nope, okay, we got the two. We'll make sure the other ones we get here to make sure we get them out and all that. So Barb Latnan, come on up and speak.
No, I'm not going to use it. Thanks. Thank you all. It's been our pleasure as Lions and Leos joint venture to judge the Halloween decorating contest that the village and the Lions and Leos have worked on. We do have some of the winners here tonight.
You want to introduce who's off?
Oh, sure. I would like to introduce myself, I'm Lion President, Barb Latnan.
I'm Karen Hicks, I'm the Lions Vice President, and I'm also the advisor for the Leo Club.
Lion Sabrina Swanson.
Lion Beth Keim, Past President.
Leo Jenna Colts, President of the Elk Grove Village Leo Club.
What high school you go to?
Elk Grove High School.
Very good, thank you. Okay, who wants to?
Jenna, Jenny, you want to do it first?
Would you like to give out your words, please? Why not? There you go.
The award for the outstanding overall Halloween theme goes to Chuck and Rita Gurrah.
You can read what's on there if you want.
2021 Halloween House Decorating Contest, 91 Shelley Court, Outstanding Overall Halloween Theme. We really enjoyed all of your lights and the way you used multimedia. And it was just overall pleasing to look at and very festive as well.
So this is our third year trying, and every year we've expanded. Most of the stuff's hand-built, a little bit's bought, but, I mean, we live on the block from you. I hope you guys walked, I hope you walked over.
Oh, we saw it, trust me. How long did it take you to set? That's a lot of work.
So we had to invest in a shed just for this?
Did you really?
Yeah. Yeah, it takes about two days to kind of get it rough set up and maybe another on and off couple nights for me to get all the electrical run properly so it'll work and all the timers set up. However, we keep adding more, I'm sure it'll add something new next year.
So you actually have a separate shed you put up just for this stuff?
It's pretty much just Halloween decorations and Christmas. Christmas is much smaller, but the house is a decent size, so we got quite a bit of lights and quite a bit of displays. And with two children that want something new every year, expect it to keep rolling.
Did you help Daddy? Did you help your Daddy? Yeah? Come here, sweetheart, come here. I'll tell you what, I got something special for you. If you want to share it with Daddy, you can. If not, that's okay too. Here's a bunch of choppers for you to enjoy. Okay, sweetheart? Yeah, you're welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wait, hang on, you want to get a group? Hey, let's step up here, we'll get a group picture together. Come on around.
Come on up on them.
Come on, ladies. Beth, why don't you go on the other side?
Can you see that up there? It's a TV camera. Right now, over five billion people watching together, okay? Congratulations, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do this one? Okay.
Okay, we have an award for outstanding use of multimedia for Rhonda Witten.
Georgie, Iowa State.
Cycle.
Very good. Very good.
This was very amazing. I remember looking at it and I was extremely impressed with all that was going on, but it was so well put together that it just made it stand out. So it's 2021 Halloween House Decorating, Outstanding Use.
Yeah, so we've been going through this for probably about 20 years, putting a little bit extra each year, changing things, adjusting, trying to make it a little bit different every year, but also keeping some of the things the same so that there's staples out there. The big enjoyment is the kids in the neighborhood coming, anytime it gets, anytime close to September, they're already asking, when are you going to put out your Halloween decorations? When are you going to? That, right there, that's worth it. So also want to thank you for letting somebody else go right after John the policeman. This would have been tough to take this award right after, right after John, so.
How long did it take you? I mean, do you kind of have to schematically think about it first before you put it up?
Yeah, so the first weekend is really getting most things out there and then just tweaking it throughout the, we normally start with like a week left in September, and then throughout October, we're tweaking it, we're changing things around. We didn't like where this was, we're going to move it here, and we're done by mid-October normally.
And kids probably love it on Halloween.
That's awesome. We have so much fun.
Well, thank you for doing it, makes it better town, everyone that did, and I know some people are going to make the night, and the tree lighting or the holiday lighting's going on now, it really makes Elk Grove a special place. And to see people put that much care and energy, it really means a lot. And you're right, the kids are what make it worthwhile.
It does.
Their eyes light up and all of that. So, well, thank you for that, here, that goes there. Can you give me some? I'm going to get the hurl. There you go.
Thank you.
And we'll go out there and go ahead and get a picture. Congratulations, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm waiting for you. You're judging those?
We're judging the holiday right now.
So Barb just said, the judging the holiday lighting right now is almost as we speak. So we'll be doing those probably in January, we should do that. So we thank you for that. And just so people know, when I was a kid growing up in Elk Grove, we had so many different civic groups. We had the Lions Club. We actually, one time, had the Industrial Lions Club. My dad, with Harry Schmerler and Jack Clayes from the Parks, formed the Industrial Lions Club way back in one time for the business people. Then we also had the JC's. We had, you know, Rotary, I mean, we used to have so many. Now we're down, I think it's between Leos, Lions, and Rotary Club are just about it. That's all we have. So, you know, anyone thinking about getting involved in the community, it's still a great way to do it. They do a lot of good. The Lions Club does the Fourth of July celebration we do every year. We have a concert, they do the food, fireworks, all that. I know Rotary does Rotary Fest. So please, if you're a person who wants to get involved in the community, look for one of those groups to join. They do a great job, they're nice people. And we start with the young ones from high school. Leo's great bringing them up. You know, when I was a kid, the Kiwanas had a junior, they called the Key Club when I was in high school. That's gone. I mean, all these things, so we thank you for what you do for the village. And matter of fact, because all you do, two of them this year. One for Halloween checking, and now Christmas too. So there you go. We thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For everything. Don't worry, I'm not going to take a shot. I got you. And be in high school, you get extra. Okay, our last thing we have tonight is a very special recognition from the fire department, so Chief Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here to recognize the work of some of our firefighters this evening for a special event that took place a short time ago. As I read through this, what I'd first like to do is introduce the folks who'll be receiving this award, then have them come down here, and we're going to ask Deputy Chief Nathan Gack to come forward too, to assist in passing some of these out. So please, if personnel from Engine 10, Lieutenant Joe McHenry, firefighter paramedic Steve Peterson, and firefighter Matthew Porton, the crew from Ambulance 10, firefighter Michael Belpedio and firefighter Clark Jensen, and the crew from Quint 7, Lieutenant Joe Hollerbach, firefighter Mark Skronski, and firefighter Doug Simpson. On Sunday night, October 3rd, at approximately 9:00 PM, Elk Grove Fire units were dispatched for a fire in a house, with supplemental information that there was a resident who could not get out of the house on his own. Firefighter paramedic Steve Peterson was training for lieutenant responsibilities that evening, and he was under the command of Lieutenant Joe McHenry. As the crews were still en route to the scene, firefighter Peterson directed the ambulance 10 crew to make entry and search for the resident. He also told the other units responding to the incident that Engine 10 would search for and control the fire. When Engine 10 arrived on the scene, there was no smoke or fire visible from outside of the residence. As Engine 10 made their way to the front of the house, the homeowner communicated to Lieutenant McHenry that her husband was in a back bedroom and the fire was in the kitchen in the front of the building. From that point, Lieutenant McHenry could see the flames through the front window and ordered companies to deploy a hose line. As Engine Ten was deploying their hose line to the front door, Ambulance Ten arrived on the scene and made their way to the front of the house. They encountered heavy smoke conditions down to the floor with moderate heat conditions as they entered the front door. The kitchen was located to the right of the front door in the front of the house. The pocket door to the kitchen had been closed by the resident prior to the Fire Department's arrival, which helped reduce the amount of fire that was exiting out of the kitchen area. Ambulance ten personnel made their way past the burning kitchen and started their search of the building, making their way towards the back bedrooms through heavy smoke conditions. They searched two bedrooms of the house before they were able to finally locate the resident in the third bedroom. It was about this time that the crew members from Quint Seven met up with ambulance ten personnel and assisted with the removal of the resident. There were still heavy smoke conditions throughout the house with low visibility and moderate heat. As the patient was removed through the hallway and out the front door, the crew from Engine Ten continued to fight the fire that was in the kitchen and protect the exit for the ambulance crew to make the rescue. The resident was assessed on the scene by our paramedics and transported to Alexium Brothers Medical Center where he was reported to be in good condition. He has since been released from the hospital. The positive outcome on this night occurred through the training, education and dedication of our Elk Grove Village firefighters and that of the members of our mutual aid companies who assisted us that evening. This positive outcome that night can also be attributed to the quick-thinking actions of the resident who shut the interior doors thereby limiting the fire spread. There was also good communications through our fire units from the dispatchers at Northwest Central Dispatch, which led our members to quickly develop a coordinated fire attack and rescue plan. So it's with both pride and pleasure that we now present the Unit Performance Award to the following members of Engine Ten, Ambulance Ten and Quint Ten, who were instrumental in the rescue of a resident that night. Congratulations to each of you for a job well done. So each of our personnel will be presented with their award this evening. And then our police chief has graciously put Police Department stickers on the Unit Performance Award that will be hung in the fire station. We appreciate that very much. Again, Lieutenant Joel McHenry, firefighter paramedic Steve Peterson. Firefighter Matt Porton. Firefighter paramedic Clark Jensen. Firefighter paramedic Mike Belpedo. Lieutenant Joe Hollerbach. Firefighter paramedic Doug Simpson and firefighter paramedic Mark Skronski. Again, congratulations and thank you for a job well done.
Hang on a second. Who was the first one there kind of in command right away? Who was? Okay, just step off a second, come on. We do a lot of training. We do a lot of training. I mean, we don't have many fires in Elk Grove.
No we don't.
We don't have many rescues like this in Elk Grove. So training is probably key, you know, in Chicago they probably get ten of these a day. Training's key. What was your thoughts when you first pulled up, saw what's going on? Again, what was your first thoughts and thinking all the way through?
I said, the crew that we had that night and then the crews I knew were coming in behind us were, I mean, they're the best. And it goes all the way back to the Police and Fire Commission hiring great people to work with and just being professional. We knew, we had a regular crew and we were able to, we all had confidence in each other that, you know, the ambulance knew we'd get the fire out, they could get the resident out of the home. The guys from the Quint were coming in right behind them to back them up and, you know, bird dog their way out and assist with them to get them out. It just, the night was set up for success. The homeowner closing the door and it went like a drill. We were all somewhat surprised at how easy it went. They don't go this easy. And it was just very well done from everybody and you didn't have to say anything. We all kind of read each other's minds and it got the job done quickly, so.
So all that training, we have the fire training facility in Elk Grove, all that stuff just comes and just all clicks together when you got there.
And it's all the classes that get approved through budgets and training, it's, it all pays off. And earlier in the day, we were working with Steve on his acting lieutenant time and we're doing size ups, which is the initial radio dispatch when you come out of scene. So we had been, believe it or not, been practicing them earlier that day and we got to do one for real that night.
Well, I think it's great. And again, like I say, it's one thing when you do it all the time, it's something like in Elk Grove, we don't have that very often. And to be able to come so quick together and use everything is so impressive. And, you know, I know you saved the person, I know I had difficulty moving, so you guys able to get in there, you save those lives, bottom line. And we cannot thank you enough. And, you know, you also minimize the damage to the house. Good response, no, I mean, that's important, you know, people want to live in a house quick as you can. And your response with the fire, taking care of that. We cannot thank you guys enough. And we are, and you're right, we're a team. It starts all the way back to those three men, they have the most thankless but hardest job out there. That's our guys, they hire every policeman, every fireman we have in this village. Those three, pick them out and doing, you see, you do the best, you guys pick the best, thank you. But and your guys too. Again, you know, when I used to have that all the time and Bill come that good, like I said, it worked like clockwork. It was great. So now he's got one more job. In here, for everyone here, he's got to make sure everyone... Well, I got, he's got more room. Got a big hat, so it helps. So it works, just kidding. Works well.
I'm getting two now.
He can have two for that comment for me. But you're good, thank you for everything. All of you, thank you very much. All you guys back there, we are a better town. We've got the best, police, fire, public works, everyone. We're the best and you just proved again why we are. So thank you very much on behalf of Elk Grove. God bless you and thanks again. Trustees, you want to come on down? Come on down.
Sure we do.
Trustees, come on, we got room. Uh, Chief Walsh, let me discuss. You all good? Hey guys.
Please, Georgie.
Thank you.
Remember, you've got the chocolates, don't mind the flowers up. Georgie. How'd that go? Pretty watch it.
Look, Valerie wrecked the carpet. He did that, he used to be here. Look at the stretch in the carpet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're going to ask him, I mean, they don't have to. Folks, if you want to go ahead and get going, now's the time, go ahead, you're fine.
Thanks.
The trustees report's coming up, so now's a good time.
Yeah.
It's now's a real good time. Especially with trustee Frankie, it's really a good time.
He really did shore one today, didn't he?
It was pretty good, wasn't it?
No.
I thought it was good. Nothing more was a shopping center. I explained that one. There's one of those guns going out. Every one of those is a gun. Chief Michael, you got a big crowd, huh?
Absolutely.
I tell you Chuck, John Williams, that's amazing. That many.
Yeah, no kidding.
All those knives and guns and...
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Got to wait for Dan to get his picture done.
You heard that, huh?
Danny's so popular, look at that. Everybody wants a picture of him.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you again.
Good night.
Thank you. Now Danny's going to get pictures out there. Okay, well that's how we move on trustees report, we'll start off with the rookie, trustee Miller.
Well, thank you. Thank you, my husband and my pastor have stayed to listen to my report, so thank you very much and my friends. But I do want to say, you kind of stole my words when you said we have the best departments of the police, fire and public works. All the other departments are great as well. I had the opportunity to be, have an orientation with each department before I actually took on this role. And I know that the police and fire have academies and the public works just had an academy as well. And if somebody wants to know how great our departments are, the academies are a way to do that. I attended the graduation of the Public Works Academy on November nineteenth and they actually gave a survey out to the graduates and the graduates couldn't say enough great things about it, how outstanding it was. So I congratulate you Kobe and I know that the police and fire are going to do an academy next year in twenty-two, in the spring. So if somebody would like to know how great our departments are, that is one way to do that and I want to thank them for all that they do. And I understand the Public Works Department is going to have an open house next March?
May.
May. May, third week of May, May of twenty-two, so thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. You stuck around all this for that? Boy, boy.
He wants chocolate.
He came for chocolate.
He wants chocolates.
I did. Oh, Chuck found some, you're good, we got you. Don't worry Clark, we got you covered. Thank you trustee Miller. Oh, by the way, she volunteered tonight for the parade commission. Trustee Frankie.
Oh, no report after that.
Trustee Fighter.
Just a little bit of addition to what Mayor Johnson said earlier. He mentioned that the Community Character Coalition had a successful Toys for Tots drive again this year. And yes, they did, it was really, really good. And that the Police Department really came through with Stuff the Squad. I've been reading a lot about that and seeing pictures on Facebook of that, a lot of attention to what happened with that and how successful it was and how many kids will benefit. But I especially wanted to just add that the Community Character Coalition decided to take five hundred dollars and contribute to the policemen's work with Stuff the Squad so they could even get more gifts than they already had bought for the kids. So it was a wonderful display of support by a community organization and by our Police Department to help kids, kids in need, and I think it's pretty wonderful, especially this time of year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Fighter. Trustee Listener.
Thank you Mayor. On November twenty-sixth, like a lot of us, I attended the annual tree lighting ceremony. And I just want to mention Mayor that I heard one person in the crowd estimated the count of people at eight thousand.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
That's good.
Yeah, I thought it was a few more than that, but... And then on December first, several of us attended the ribbon cutting at the law offices of Newman Angelo.
Nauman.
Nauman.
Nauman, okay. And Associates, great offices at twenty-five Northwest Point with a great view of the buzzy woods. And on December third, I attended the Greater O'Hare Elk Grove and I Tasker Chamber Holiday Volunteer Luncheon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Listener. And thank you this side, I'm used to this combination, so makes it easier. Uh, trustee Prochnow.
Uh, thank you, I also had the opportunity to be at Walmart last Saturday when they were doing the pack the chocolate. Chief Walsh was there and several, several officers out there for hours on hours and they more than packed the truck. And again, I, when I was in the store, I picked up some items to donate too, but I noticed the, um, one of the officers checking out using those gift cards that were so generously donated and just buying more and more and more. That truck was overstuffed, so congratulations on your efforts for that, that was really awesome. And speaking of Chief Walsh, we both had the opportunity last Friday on December ninth to go to the Elk Grove Village Public Library and attend the opening of the exhibit. Uh, I don't know that it had a title.
Beautiful Bulgarian.
Thank you. And trustee Fighter and trustee Walsh have been avid supporters of the Bulgarian culture and have both traveled to Bulgaria, Pat, three times I believe, right? Four times? Lose track after a while. Anyway, Bulgaria is one of our friend cities. They are trying to become a sister city as we have with Chairman Emmerich, but they are right now just considered a friend city. But it was just a lovely photographic display of all the beauty of Bulgaria and we both really enjoyed attending that. Update on the farmer's market. Just a reminder that the farmer's market is open the first and third Saturday of the month at the Christus Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road across from the theater. They will be closed Saturday, January first, however, for the New Year holiday. The market is going well. They have left, they have leftover farm with fresh vegetables through hydroponic farming, two meat vendors, baked goods, pasta, sauces, the cheese people, homemade dog treats and so much more. Please support the market this Saturday. On December twelfth, the market presented the village food pantry with a check for five thousand dollars. With the Myers Give Back Program, the store normally matches that donation. Because of the amount, there is a chance that Myers will double that amount and match it for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. So that's wonderful for our food pantry. The market also donated one thousand dollars to the Christus Victus Food Pantry. What great support for the community. And then last but not least, I know it's just December and I know I'm still wearing my shorts and it's going to be sixty tomorrow, but before the next board meeting in January, I have a feeling we might get some snow.
No.
You don't think so?
No.
I hope not, but with, this begins my annual snow shovel soapbox. Just reminding people that when the snow does come down, please be good neighbors and shovel your sidewalks. If you have neighbors that are elderly or handicapped, please help them out, let's keep those sidewalks cleaned off. There's a lot of people out there walking their pets, there's a lot of seniors out there, especially during the pandemic, walking outside for exercises because they don't want to go to indoor places to exercise. And we want to keep as many people safe as possible. So when that snow comes down, be a good member of the community and either get your sidewalk shoveled or if you can, if you can give a little bit extra, help out your neighbors and friends. And I do believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I also attended the ribbon cutting ceremony that trustee Listener talked about. The, uh, the law firm deals basically with real estate business, corporate law and civil litigation. It was well attended by members of the board. And other than that, I'd just like to wish everyone in our community a very happy, safe and healthy holiday season. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, move on, accounts payable warrant. First we have for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of four million, three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Fighter. Jen, will you call the roll please?
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Fighter.
Yes.
Motion passes six to nothing. We have a accounts payable warrant for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Fighter with objection, court of the vote is fiercely demonstrated, six to nothing. Today we have consent agenda items, A as in apple through Q as in... What do you think Mr. Parker? What's a good Q word?
Quack.
Quiet.
Don't say quack when you're talking to a village attorney, okay? So be careful.
Quiet and quick was that directed towards you.
Quack.
We'll go with quack.
Okay, quack. Can I have a motion?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener. Any board members or staff on any of the consent agenda items?
Just a reminder under item P, which pertains to the acquisition of the shopping center you mentioned during your mayor's report. Uh, the address is actually fifty-three South Arlington Heights Road and not seven fifty South Arlington Heights Road.
Okay, so duly noted, anything else? Anybody in the audience? Audience kind of cleared out.
No, they didn't.
Well, we have Helen here. Let's see. Okay, uh, without objection, record the vote as please demonstrated, six to nothing. We now move on to regular agenda, Mr. Romo.
Uh, mayor, board of trustees, you do have three items under the regular agenda tonight, which is probably the longest regular agenda I've seen in quite some time. Um, there are two sign variations and then there's a, uh, total package pertaining to the prime data center, uh, development in Elk Grove. So if you don't mind, I'd like to do the two, uh, sign variations first. Uh, the first request is for the Strawberry Hill Plaza to replace their monument sign, which was struck by an automobile. The sign was originally located by sign variation and needs to be therefore replaced by sign variation. Uh, village staff has reviewed the request, recommends approval. And if you find it appropriate, a motion to authorize the new sign variation for the Strawberry Hill signage would be appreciated.
Okay, any questions, comments or concerns for board members? If not, can I get a motion to direct attorney, prepare necessary documents?
So move. Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Fighter, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show you that, so approval. Next item, Mr. Romo.
Next sign variation request is for, uh, the town center. You have a request for a temporary banner of four foot by ten foot in length to be installed at one of the vacant strip areas, which would indicate that COVID tests are going to be administered, uh, free of charge at that location. Uh, the request is to have the sign go up soon and come down on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The village, uh, zoning for that district does require the village board to approve any signs that go up at the town center. They find it appropriate to do so, a motion to allow that signage would be in order.
Where now in the town center is this going? Is it by the PP, uh, the, um, protection?
I am not entirely sure which space it is.
Sounds curious, anybody, Mary Jo, would you know?
I believe Mr. Rowan knows.
Oh, Matt, you know? Oh, by good tequila?
Yes, Mary Jo said yes.
Okay, so, and this is all, it's free? No charge to get tested?
That's what the sign says.
Pardon? So federal government free, is this quick results or is this slow results, you don't know? Mary Jo, they say anything to you about it?
I think it's twenty-four hours.
Okay, so it's probably a little more efficient ones, but now like, okay. And it's free, so anyone can walk in and get it done. Okay, that's very good. Okay, um, uh, I need a motion from the board?
So move.
Second.
Oh. Wow. You help her Jeff?
Nope.
You, you get a cheat sheet or something? Do that?
I'd tell her how to vote.
Okay, good boy. Motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Last item, Mr. Romo.
Uh, the last item pertains to the prime data centers and they're looking to construct a, uh, data center campus, as we know, on Oakton Street and Bussy and Higgins Road here in Elk Grove Village. Um, in order to make this happen, it requires several rezonings of different properties as well as a re-subdivision of the property and some height variation requests. So the, uh, plan commission was gracious enough to hear the entire request from prime data center way back on November twenty-ninth. And they have recommended unanimously by a vote of six to zero, uh, to authorize the, uh, to recommend that the village board authorize the granting of, uh, platter re-subdivision, uh, several rezonings and several other, uh, stipulations for the property. Uh, as you know, prime data center is looking to build two buildings on the site totaling seven hundred thirty thousand square foot of data center usage. And several of the other recommendations included, um, a variation to allow the buildings to be ninety feet in height as opposed to sixty feet in height, um, to change the bulk area and yard, uh, requirements from eighty percent floor area to ninety-nine percent floor area and to allow an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence and to reduce, uh, the loading dock space required, uh, from fourteen to four, the loading space required. The last item was the plan commission wanted to take a look at a landscape plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the property. Um, the village attorney was kind enough to put together all the documents so that we can move forward, uh, should the board find it desirable to do so by voting on ordinance number thirty-seven, thirty-six this evening, which would effectuate everything that we've just talked about.
Now, my understanding is they also approved, if we get the other property we've been talking about and they want to do the three buildings, that's already approved in this plan also. Okay, so basically this is the least they're going to do.
Well, and, um, Mr. Rowan?
If we bring the property, they have to come back and spoil up again and it's going to be in it.
It's a re-subdivision.
Okay, so would they only have to do that or would they have to also go through the process with the third building? Or is that included in this first one?
No, it would be in the package, they bring the third building in this way and how they're going to change their layout.
Okay, so they still had to address that? Okay, but that is their intention. Okay, very good. Any questions, cons for any board members on this? We're very excited about the prime development and, um, sooner they get going, the better. So that'd be good for us. Okay, um, again, this is development. We also got the, um, entry feature that's going by the corner, um, at Oakton and Bussy, where the old Progie strip shopping center was, so that'd be included too in this whole project. Okay, I need a motion? Now, to approve this ordinance, it's already put together.
It's already put together.
So we don't have to have them prepare it, it's already prepared, so I need a motion to approve it?
So move.
Okay, motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener. Does everybody understand what we're doing? I want to make sure all, we're good?
We have to come back after they get the other property.
Right, right now, what we're proving is the two building development.
Right.
If we acquire the other property in the rear, they'll come back to get the third building, the future expansion of the, uh, substation, everything like that and annexation.
All of it will be included in the next.
In the next one, right.
If it happens, okay.
Yep, so they'll go from seven hundred some thousand square feet, close to a million, if this all happens. So we do this. Okay, so we're all good? Um, Jen, call the roll on this one.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Fighter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Very good, Mr. Romo. Uh, plan commission, Mr. Romo.
Uh, there are no items under the plan commission nor the zoning board of appeals.
Very good. Now, I ask the board to be with me since we have new names, new titles on our commissions and committees. I start off with youth committee that has stayed the same. Oh, we mixed up the order too. Look, that's still same order.
Same order.
Okay, we should have mixed that up. Cause trustees prefer to have different things, so for the next meeting, if you could just readjust.
Readjust.
Am I correct trustees like that?
No direction, just mix them up.
Yeah, mix them up.
Just mix them up, whatever you want. Am I not correct that trustees in the past have asked, that's not always the same sequence after a while? I will make sure I take care of it.
True, it has been said that, that has been said.
See, I still got some of it. Um, we started this tonight though, youth committee trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
Can I make a recommendation that we move that around and make the mayor's report last on everything?
No, because, no, it's not possible.
Don't we want the people to be awake when we have?
We have, we have a, uh, what do they call it? At the end of the day, everyone's got, what do they call that, is it shut down by?
Siesta?
No, what's that called?
Everyone has at the end of the day.
You gotta stop by some point, what's that called? A what?
Alcohol.
That's a whole different thing.
No, that's, that never stops. What's that called? I mean, you have to stop by a certain point, can't go in there. Too late at night, what's that called?
Curfew.
Curfew, thank you. We have curfew ordinance to the village, so it can't be done, we wouldn't otherwise. Oh, but that said, any report from Mr. Jeffrey Charles Flankie?
Yeah, just a quick one to say that, uh, af- that the next board meeting in January, I will have all the information about the youth scholarships that we will be letting forms out to the schools and, uh, on our website. So we're putting that together now, so, uh, I'll be talking about it, uh, from January till May until we get them in, so.
The youth committee gives out how much?
Seven, one thousand dollar scholarships.
So good.
And, uh, you know, it's free money, you gotta go after it, so. I'll have more with that, uh, starting in, uh, January.
Um, trustee Frankie, can you have someone notify the park district of the change in membership on our side of the committee?
I can, I think they changed theirs also. So, um, we will do that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I'm looking forward to chairing this committee and, uh, working with, uh, Josh and Nick. And our first meeting will be on January tenth of two thousand twenty-two at eleven, eleven o'clock AM. Thinking police eleven hundred hours. Eleven o'clock AM, we're going to be meeting with the zoning code update steering committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable television committee trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you mayor, I've got quite a few things, uh, since I don't have some other positions, I really loaded up on this one.
They gotta make up for it.
Effective December seventeenth, fuse, F U S E, will be added to the Comcast digital preferred package and FM will be added to the sports entertainment package. Uh, also, uh, the Atlantic or the ACC network will be added to the digital preferred ultimate level of service. I have a list of all the teams, well, you probably know them, don't you, Mr. Mayor? The Atlantic Coast Conference, Georgia Tech and so on. And let's see, uh, that'll be joining the Big Ten and SEC conferences on Comcast. And effective January fifth, the living faith network will be added to the basic channel level. Uh, this network is currently available on DirecTV and on the web at, uh, ulfn.org if you want to take a peek at it. And one more little thing of good news, Comcast has announced, beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, there'll be a slight price increase for specific, specific services and fees. The amounts look to be two to three dollars a month for, uh, TV and another three dollars for the internet. And that concludes my, oh, one other thing. Uh, Elk Grove TV started using closed captioning. Uh, I didn't know if you were going to mention this mayor, but.
No, I saved it for you.
Oh, thank you. Um, anyway, if you got an Xfinity controller, if you just press the B button, you could turn on, uh, closed captioning and it's real, real straightforward to use. You could even change the color of the print if you want. Uh, it's a little slow right now, but, uh, over a month or so, it'll learn more of, uh, the, I guess there's a learning process for it and then the accuracy should get much better in a few months. And, uh, the on-demand program will also be serviced probably beginning in mid-January. So this will be great for the people that have either hard of hearing issues or want to keep their TV real low. Uh, I compliment Ross and, uh, the other people involved for, uh, adding this to our Elk Grove TV listed services. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Listener. Uh, health and community services trustee Prochnow.
I know, this is so strange, I'm so used to trustees earning and giving this report for the last twenty-four years that I've been here. But, uh, I'm going to make my attempt, I'm excited about taking over the health and community service board. And, um, I'll be bringing a wide range of information, not just for what's going on in the village, village hall, but in the village in general if it's helping someone in our community. Which leads me to my first bit of information and I got this, um, thank you to the, uh, from the Elk Grove Journal. And I had not heard of this before. Elk Grove Township has a new state veteran service officer working out of an office at Elk Grove Township Hall four days a week. Township supervisor George Bussy said Walter Wilson, who began working out of the township offices in Elk Grove Township two weeks ago, has ten years of service management experience. He works for the Illinois Department of Veterans Affairs by appointment Monday through Thursday and is accredited by the US Veterans Administration. Bussy said Wilson is there to assist all veterans, including those living outside of Elk Grove Township, to identify what benefits veterans are eligible for, assist them in signing up to receive those benefits, navigate state and federal veteran bureaucracies and help resolve disputes. I think that's a wonderful service for the township to be providing a space for this, um, to help our veterans in our community because a lot of them probably don't know where to turn and are in need of services that, or are unaware of services that are available to them. So I hope that people will take advantage of it and, uh, I also thank the journal for putting that information out for them. Elk Grove has got a blood drive coming up Saturday, January eighth, from eight AM to one PM at Village Hall, room E, nine oh one Wellington. Uh, to, to schedule a donation, call eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five or visit us at vitalant, V I T A L A N T dot org. So, um, Papa John's, all presenting donors, all presenting donors will receive a coupon for a large Papa John's one top pizza. So, I mean, we encourage people to do it, not for the pizza, but it's like a little perk for, for donating. And if you've been watching, uh, anything on TV, you can see that any of the blood organizations, there's a huge shortage right now of blood. And they're looking for people to be able to donate. And speaking of.
Trustee Prochnow, it's in room E now?
It is in room E. It says room E.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
But there'll be signage.
There, there should be signage directing because you will be using a different door to get to, to the room. It's on the far end of the building on the west side. I have to look at my directions. Um, and speaking of, of donating, I'd like to take a minute to honor and remember Dean Rowing, who passed away December third at the age of eighty-nine. If anybody has ever donated blood in Elk Grove, you've seen Dean with his crew, crew cut ready there to, to donate blood. Dean was a resident of Elk Grove for over sixty years. During that time, Dean donated twenty-one gallons of blood. That's one hundred and sixty-eight donations. Thank you Dean for caring so much about your community, you will be, you will be missed. And last but not least, the rest by program, A Caring Place, is open on Monday and Thursday from nine thirty until noon. These are reduced hours, um, I think the hours will increase as the pandemic calms down. Please call the Christus Victor Church for more information on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Prochnow. Information committee trustee Miller.
So I'd like the residents to know that the, um, latest issue of the newsletter, the Elk Grove Villager, will be coming to the mailboxes this weekend. There's some great tips about winter travel and also the, um, just ice and snow control and be very, very careful. So look for that in your mailbox. That concludes my report.
And trustee Miller, I just want to put a, a comment about that newsletter you just mentioned. I, I, I'm really happy with all the work that was done on it. I think they did a beautiful job and I'm so impressed with the, where the newsletter looks.
There you go.
It really is terrific.
Yeah, all your work you did on getting that ready trustee Miller.
I thank you very much.
We want to thank you for that effort. That was good.
Lot of time put in.
Okay, move on to recycling waste committee trustee Fighter.
I want to, um, make sure everybody is still thinking about our simple recycling program. Um, we, I haven't mentioned it for a while and with our changes we've made with, uh, Groot and so forth, I didn't want to pass this up without saying something. Our, the simple recycling program is the one where you put out the orange bag in the days that they pick up your, uh, garbage and they come by and in that orange bag, you can put any kind of textile material. They will take it, uh, they'll take, uh, leather belts, they'll take wallets, they'll take shoes, they'll take almost anything in there. You put it there and they will take it away and leave another orange bag for you. Uh, during, uh, in September of twenty twenty, we had one hundred and three thousand pounds of textile materials that have been collected. Uh, really impressive, a lot, all that stuff would have gone into landfills. Instead, it's, they're being recycled. I think that's a, a really wonderful thing for our community and for our environment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Fighter. Parade committee trustee Johnson, no report this time, our first meeting is January tenth, six PM. What rooms is that in? Room E, okay, thank you. I shouldn't be doing that, but I'm, I'm being a good team member. As a mayor Johnson.
About time.
Close enough. Okay, uh, personnel committee trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
No report.
Judiciary planning zoning committee trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, we have a meeting on January second of two thousand twenty-two.
Second? You're coming on Sundays, I'm impressed. Trustee Schmidt, I'm impressed, what a chairman.
January seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at ten o'clock in the morning at the Public Earth Facility at four fifty East Devine Avenue.
I was impressed.
That concludes my report.
Very good. Move on now to Airport Update. They've got a meeting coming up on Thursday, flight quiet. Hopefully our concerns about the rotation, angles of takeoff, and directions are addressed, and be good. Midsummer Classics Concert Series update, Mr. Knickerbocker, the lineup. Good luck on this one.
I have no clue.
You have no clue?
No.
Why not?
I've been out of town.
No, you weren't, you're here when we announced it. You're sitting right there, as we played up on the video.
Yeah. I have no clue. I have, I can't even remember one.
Fourth of July, who do you think you opened up with? During the day, it's nice and, what, outside?
Oh, Casey and the Sunshine Band?
Very good. See, we could make a good team, okay? That's the opening bands. The second band?
Yes.
We have a creek, not a...
River, stream, river.
River, okay. Not a big one, it's all... Well, we all want to go to bed tonight, so Little River Band.
Thank you.
The third one, which is at the Roadie Fest, is, the capital of Illinois is what?
Springfield.
Very good, so what's the band?
Something with Springfield?
Rick Springfield.
Oh, that guy, yeah, yeah. He's good, you'll like him.
And we finish up with the fourth band right here at the Town Center?
I'm sure we will.
Any idea?
No, I have none.
Then what's over?
Pardon me?
Then what's over? It's a woman.
She... Oh, Sheena Eastern.
Very good. Way to go, Mr., that is probably the worst you've ever done in all the years.
Just woke up after your report.
I guarantee, I guarantee Bill Payne wouldn't make those mistakes.
Ah, we'll, we'll see you in February, we'll give him an opportunity.
Okay, so again, our lineup is Casey Sunshine Band, Little River Band, Rick Springfield, and Sheena Eastern. Looking forward to it, and keep your eyes open for something coming in June. Okay, Special Events Committee, our next event is actually Memorial Day, I think.
Wow.
That's the next thing?
Better get going, Procton.
Guess you're right.
Anything else, so, okay. Because then we have Memorial Day, the end of June, we have one with Mr. Rommel leaving. That'd be our next special event, you know? And that's good. Okay, Lick and Commission, no report. I talked about earlier how well our law that we did. Remember, we are the first town in the country to go mandatory carding, and it shows it works. Report from our still village manager, Mr. Raymond Rommel.
I won't even say, a hundred and seven days to go. I have no report.
Hundred and seven days to go to where? Okay, report from our village clerk.
No report.
Do we know yet if we're gonna be a site for the June primary?
Is it June primary?
Yeah, the primary this year's in June in Illinois. Yes, not in March. So we haven't heard anything yet?
I don't think, I don't think we've heard anything, but I thought there was something down the pipeline, that there might be, yes.
We love hosting, that's great for us. Okay, Mr. Knickerbocker, unfinished business, as usual, you have nothing under there? Any new business items from anybody tonight on the board?
Yes, Mayor.
Ooh, Mr. Listener. Oh, you only have one thing to report on tonight, not three, so now every time we have new business?
I did all those other... But anyway.
Go ahead.
No, trustee Schmidt probably didn't have a chance to catch up on this yet, because he just got the committee, but I just want to mention that tomorrow night at Enclave, they have another masterclass, and what's special about this one is Jeff Taylor, the CEO at Crafts Technology, located on Joey Drive in Elk Grove, Jeff is making the presentation. And Jeff's always been a great supporter of the Business Leaders Forum and also of Enclave, and he's talking about his hundred and twenty-eight-year-old company and how it maintains an entrepreneurial mindset. So if anyone wants to go, it probably starts about seven o'clock tomorrow, and I think the doors open at six, but it's no charge if you want to go, and Jeff will give a great presentation, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I know Mr. Knickerbocker's gonna be there, running his bands. Trustee Fighter?
Reefs Across America, that is an...
She's gonna speak in a minute.
She's gonna speak in a minute.
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
Okay.
All set.
I was gonna say, but you're gonna speak, okay.
Okay, anything else from trustees?
Have a wonderful holiday, everybody.
Yeah.
Enjoy it, it goes fast.
Too fast. Okay, Jane, the speaker's yours. If you want, Mary, come on down, we'd love to have her. Yeah, that one right there.
Well, we do actually have another village event, and that's this Saturday, our Reefs Across America event. And I just want to say thank you for all the support you've given us. You've given us wonderful publicity. The Police Department particularly has been so supportive. I think it's gonna be a wonderful event. I'm not really sure how many people are going to be there, but I think it'll be bigger than the event that we had in two thousand nineteen. I think we'll have at least a hundred people, and we could have quite a few more, so your VIP parking pass that you got is, is really a golden ticket. I want you to know, in case you're not aware, that this is part of a very, very big national event. This year, there will probably be close to three million wreaths laid on veterans' graves across the country and first responders as well. I think that's phenomenal. That shows how much the American people really do appreciate their history and all that veterans have suffered. So we're gonna have a great event. We've got some wonderful guests coming. I'm pretty sure our Congressman, Raja Krishnamurthy, I believe, will be with us. Laura Murphy, Michelle Musman, George Bussey, the supervisor of our township, should be with us this year. Kevin Morrison will be joining us, it'll be great, and I will be looking to the mayor to corral everyone. I'll have to give you a phone call and talk to you about that a little bit more. But, you know, wherever I go in the community, people always ask me about Mary, because Mary is a great storyteller, because she's a great researcher. So I thought I'd bring Mary. Our chapter is really pleased to have Mary as, as part of our, our leadership. Mary's a past region of our chapter, and she's our chapter registrar. She's certainly our research expert. She's a retired United States Navy Master Chief, and she was on, actually, the first female honor flight that flew out of Chicago in October. So we're very proud of Mary, and I, I asked her to come along and tell you a couple of interesting stories.
Before you do that, could you do, go over date, time, location for the event?
Yes, absolutely. So it's this Saturday, December eighteenth, the event starts at ten AM at Elk Grove Cemetery. You do need to park in off-site parking at the Chase Bank on one hundred East Higgins, with the exception of those that we've given passes to park at the cemetery because it's so limited. So it's this Saturday, ten AM, and I think we're better organized than we were the first year we did it, so we will be very reverent, but brief.
Thank you, thank you.
And you have a shuttle bus from Chase?
I was just gonna say that, and there will be a shuttle bus from the bank to the cemetery, so, and get you back again, too, so we won't leave you sitting out there. Elk Grove Cemetery, as, as I think all of you know, is an incredible jewel for this town, and quite honestly, for the entire northwest suburbs. It's really the resting place of a good many of the people who came and formed this area in the early eighteen hundreds. It is the only cemetery in Cook County which has the remains of Revolutionary War patriots, and there are two of them. There's Eli Skinner and Aaron Minor. Eli Skinner is the name of our DAR chapter. Aaron Minor is the CAR, the Children of the American Revolution Society in this area, is named after Aaron Minor. Since I didn't get a chance to be here last year, I thought I'd give you two stories, because I'm kind of like the story person in the place. One is that that cemetery also holds the remain, well, holds markers for five Civil War veterans. Only one of those five survived the Civil War. Four of them died not through injuries at all, they died from various illnesses. Two of the markers there actually are what is called a cenotaph. The person died in Tennessee from consumption, and they are buried in Tennessee, but their family had, had a marker put here so that they would always be remembered in their own hometown. One of the more current ones I want to let you know about is, if you go out there, you find a marker for Benjamin Stanger, Benny Stanger. Benny Stanger was the first paid firefighter for the town of Displanes. At that time, Displanes had about eight thousand people around, and Benny was a volunteer with the fire department and was among the group, of course, that answered all the calls that came out, and they had a call in nineteen twenty-nine, and, and everyone went out that night to go fight the fire, and no one brought the truck. And when that happened, Displanes said, we need a paid firefighter. So they hired Benny Stanger to be the night firefighter, who would man the truck, bring the truck out to any calls that needed to be. Benny had an extra thing that he had going along the way, too, is that his hobby was that he was a beekeeper. And one of the things that was very common was you would get swarms of bees, either on trees, houses, whatever, and they would call out Benny, and Benny would come out and convince the bees to come into his little stuff and head them off and put them out in his hives, and right about this time of year, he'd show up at the fire department with a whole load of honey and sell it to all the firemen, all the brand-new, well-done honey out there, so. But the cemetery itself, just walking around it is incredible when you see the age of the stones. The first burial there was eighteen thirty-eight. Frederick Minor, Dr. Frederick Minor, who was the first physician in this area and was the son of Aaron Minor, was, had a patient who gave birth, and six months after the baby was born, the baby passed away, Mary Barnes. Dr. Minor donated that land that the cemetery is on right now and gave it to the community for a burial place for those, those families that were in the area, and there weren't very many families in the area at the time. And there is a monument out there, you will see a monument there for Mary Barnes, six months old. And now about four rows back from there, you will also find the one for Dr. Frederick Minor. And while I was doing a little bit of research this week, I ran across a, a little piece on when Dr. Minor died, the resolution of his estate. And in this court thing that they had in the paper, they listed his property. I got tired after a little while, reading how much property this man owned, not only here, but in the town of Dunton, which of course is Arlington Heights. He owned huge pieces of the downtown section of Dunton, and it was being split out between an incredible group of people that are what I refer to as the street names, so it's like Cosman, Bussey, those kind of things. It's all the people that you hear about all the time. The cemetery itself is an absolute gem, and if you were able to come this weekend, we will be more than happy to show you around a little bit and tell you a little bit about the people that are buried out there. It's a, it's a really special place.
You'll be there, Mary? You'll be there Saturday?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm the Bugler.
So you'll give us a little tour?
I'm the Bugler.
Okay, you'll give us a tour?
Oh, sure, sure. We're doing research right now, I'm through the L's at the moment, so what I'm doing is trying to come up with a little bit on everyone that we know who's buried there. We are working in cooperation with the Cemetery Association, and the goal is, once I get done with the, what I can get off the internet and the, and the common resources, then I'll start working with the Historical Museum, and we'll combine what they've got, and they've got some boxes of stuff back there that I have a feeling is gonna take me a couple of years to go through. But when we get done, the goal is to have the records of what's, of the people that are there, at least some basic information on everyone, and as much information as we can get on anyone that we can, so that no one in that cemetery is forgotten.
Now, do you have a list, will they give you a list of people that aren't dead yet but have lots there, too?
No, they don't, the Cemetery Association has that, but I don't.
They don't give it to you?
No.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, it is, it is still a, a working cemetery.
Oh, yeah, there's, I think about a hundred and fifty plots, a hundred and sixty plots still available.
Actually still available, yeah.
It's a thousand dollars each.
Since, yeah, it's, it's really some of the cheaper plots you'll find in this area. Since our last time of being able to be in front of you, we've, of course, had two veterans go, be buried out there, one being a gentleman by the name of John Beday, who died back in two thousand nineteen. Very unfortunate situation, he died in December, and he died, and three days later, his wife died. I don't know if it was the same illness or not, but they are both buried together out there. The other one, of course, is Urban Leo, who passed away last year, and he is now interred out there with his wife.
Right.
So those are our two veterans that have been added on.
They used to live on Fleetwood.
Yeah, very involved with the American Legion, very involved with the American Legion.
Is there any kind of federal protection for that cemetery? Because it's so close to the tollway.
I can tell you, I can tell you that when the tollway went up, it was a tremendous war out there to keep that land from getting, meeting the fate of the Saint John Cemetery that became a runway out of O'Hare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that fight.
This, this, this village fought like crazy to keep that going. One of the things that we've noticed at the cemetery, however, is that because of the, the highway being above, it feeds all the water from the highway down the hill to the edge of the cemetery. And although there are a hundred and fifty, my bet is there's probably fifty of those can't be used right now because they get too wet. And there was no protection put in there for the land of the cemetery to keep it from getting flooded out, but it gets flooded out quite a bit on the north side of the cemetery there.
And that's from the tollway?
That's from the tollway, that's the water coming down, it's, that's where it's at. It's, so it's gotta be, that, that's the problem.
Well, that's something we can look into, seeing if we can get the tollway rectified.
Yeah.
Because a tollway can never go any further.
Right.
They're, they're done, they can't go any further.
Right.
At least that direction.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's something...
Go in the other direction, you can't go anywhere because you've got the electrics.
Right. Matt, make a note, we should contact, reach out to...
And, and you may want to check with the Cemetery Association to get a little better idea of exactly what the issue is, but we, we noticed that, that north end of the cemetery, the part that's next to the tollway.
So all the north side of the cemetery is basically almost worthless.
Yeah, yeah, the, the graves up there are very, very wet, to the point that you can't walk out there sometimes because it gets deep in mud.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Looking forward to seeing Saturday.
Yeah, me too.
Love the history, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, they'll get chocolates, go take care. Thank you, Beth, for doing it. Anybody else wish to address the board tonight while they're here?
Ellen.
Yes, Helen.
I just want to thank Police Chief Walsh for coming to the Senior Center for the Holiday Luncheon. The police provides a luncheon for members of the Sheila Ray Adult Center every holiday, and it was very nice, and very glad. They gave a wonderful speech, told everybody, you were so lucky to live in this village. We offer, they offer everybody so much, and he also told about the different scams that are happening all over. We're lucky, we don't have many, and other suburban areas, or Chicago does, we are really fortunate. It was a wonderful day for all of us, thank you very much.
Thank you. Way to go, Chuck, nice job, buddy. You want a fifth one? Thank you, Helen, appreciate it. Anything back to normal with the Senior Center and everything?
Yeah, I think we are.
Oh, they just had a wonderful senior bazaar. Thursday and Friday of last week, they had their annual Christmas bazaar, and I visited it, spent a lot of money, but I won a poinsettia, but it was really very nicely done, and I look forward to it every year.
Well, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Seeing none, hearing none? It's ten to nine.